Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting, August 11, 2025. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from the agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on August 19, 2025, at 10:30 a.m. The 10:30 a.m. is an approximation of when they switch to the planning agenda. They're very good about trying to do that to limit the amount of time that you have to spend waiting in the audience. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting, and I see most of you did find them. Nobody's going to get denied an opportunity to speak either way. Roll call, we don't need one. Everybody's here, Jerry. I hope you all had a chance to go through your agenda packet and had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the July 28, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission. Chair, address a motion to approve them if you so desire.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the July 28, 2025, meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda is the next item on the agenda, and that too should have been through your packet. Have you had an opportunity to review the agenda that was submitted to you? If so, Chair would address a motion.
To move. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted for the Pennington County Planning Commission, August 11, 2025. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The consent agenda. Good morning, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number four is conditional use permit review C O R 1307 for Jack Bratt to review the operation of a dude ranch to include lodging and horse trail rides in agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review C O R 1307 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review C O R 1727 for Bethra Lee Sears to review an existing 12 by 12 structure to be used as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review C O R 1727 with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review C O R 1743 for Under Canvas UC Glamping Partners LLC to review a recreational resort in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit amendment review C O R 1743 with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review C O R 1744 for Gregory Yates to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district, and staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit review C O R 1744 to the September 22, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to allow staff time to contact the new owners. Item number eight is conditional use permit review C O R 1821 for David and Leah Byers to review a single-family residence in a highway service district, and staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit review C O R 1821 to the April 13, 2026 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant time to work with the South Dakota Department of Transportation to approve the approach for commercial use. Item number nine is conditional use permit review C O R 1902 for Greg and Angelina Anderson to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review C O R 1902 with conditions. Item number 10 is conditional use permit review C O R 1920 for Cody Russ Butler to review a vacation home rental in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review C O R 1920 with conditions. Item number 11 is conditional use permit review C O R 2025 for Jessica Hessler, Seven Wonders LLC, to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review C O R 2025 with conditions. And finally, item 12 is conditional use permit review C O R 2102 for InRep rifles, Inc., Mark Lebkey, to review a home occupation, a home-based firearms business in a rural residential district, and staff recommends to end conditional use permit review C O R 2102 with the applicant's concurrence.
Thank you, Brittany. Do you have any from the staff that you desire to have polled today?
No, not at this time.
Same from the commission. Is there anyone who would like to have an item polled for today?
Five and 11.
Five? Also, the audience has the right to poll one. Is there anyone from the audience? And just so you know, and I'll remind you, that was kind of a long one. These are approved with one vote, and if you desire to speak on that or have a question in regards to any one of these items, you certainly are allowed to pull that before we vote on that item. Does anyone in the audience have an item they came here to speak on? Thank you. Chair, address a motion. Mike?
Well, I'd make a motion that we approve the conditional use permits with the exception of five and 11.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
To then moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda per staff's recommendation with item number five, and item number 11 removed. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're on to item number 11.
Five.
Five. Five, excuse me. That's right. My book opened at 11.
Quick question. Do we have any pictures of this shed, this building? We don't have anything.
There were no pictures in there. I apologize. It's just a small cabin. The original request for this was they built a shed, and then they used it as a playhouse for family members that came to visit. And where it's located in Silver City, it was used more for overnight occupancy by family members. So that's why this CUP is here, because it didn't meet the 20 by 20 requirements. And at the time, our ordinance required that anything that didn't meet the 20 by 20 for a single-family residence had to get a conditional use permit. So that's why that is here. I'll look. I think there are.
Just curious if it looked like a house or if it just looked like a shed.
It looks like a small cabin. It looks like a small A-frame type cabin, and it has a deck on the front.
Okay.
Brittany?
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't this the one several years ago that had like an outhouse? And we wanted to make sure they weren't using it as an outhouse? We had pictures then.
Correct. So, like I said, they own an adjoining property. So what they do is they have family members that stay in that, but they utilize the services in the adjoining property house. So this conditional use permit comes up for review occasionally just to make sure that that's still happening and that it ever gets converted fully to where there's running water or anything outside of that, or the property gets sold, that they have to address the onsite wastewater treatment system.
Okay. The last question I have is, when this was done, what was the square footage required for a living thing, about 400 feet?
Yeah, it's a 20 by 20. So this was a 12 by 12. Originally, it was permitted as a shed. There's a long history on it, because they originally built it without permits, because it was the 12 by 12 shed, then found out it has like a loft. They use it as a... So this is kind of the result to bring it into compliance.
One thing kind of tumbles into another about from the 12 by 12, which is the building permit requirement, to the 400, to the plumbing and the other items.
Correct.
Okay. I understand that. Anyone else have a question for Brittany on this?
You want me to make a motion?
Any other discussion from the audience? Anybody here on that? Speak on them. There isn't. Go ahead, Mike.
Want me to make a motion on five only or wait till 11?
You're the most obvious candidate right now for that motion.
But I do, I do them together, five and 11?
No.
No, you cannot do them together.
All right. I make a motion that we approve conditional use permit C U R 17-27 with five conditions.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve C U R 17-27 with five conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 11.
Stupid question. The last time you visited there and laid eyes on it was 4/23?
Kelsey Planner. Let's see. The last, I actually drove by there a couple weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
And the pictures online are all the same as when I was there in 4/23.
Well, I looked at it, geez, two years ago.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's the only thing I have. That's it. Thank you.
I remember when they, this thing came through. I was worried about them having more insurance that a car was going to drive through it. So they haven't had any problem with anybody sliding into it yet, huh?
No, no problems.
It is close. All righty. Any other discussion from the audience? Anyone here to speak on that? Thank you. Chair, address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve conditional use permit review C U R 20-25 with 17 conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, C U R 20-25 with 17 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item, what's the next one? 13? Does that sound right? Oh, and that's you.
Okay. Kelsey Roush Planner. Item 13 is a conditional use permit request to live in a recreational vehicle on the property during the summer months on a temporary basis. The applicant and owner is Jill and James Brunch, who is in the audience if you have questions. The location is 15449 Highway 1416. It's almost, it's 19.26 acres and zoned agriculture district. Staff did not receive any complaints or anything from the neighbors. During the interdepartmental review, the only thing that came up was what they were planning on doing with their septic. They have been using a composting toilet, as they have a current conditional use permit that was approved in 2019. At that point, the conditions were that they were required to build a house. They have never planned on building a house as of, they hadn't, had not planned to build a house, but the conditions basically required that. So they requested that they maybe amend that conditional use permit, but I suggested that we start a whole new one. The composting toilet does have, there's a letter from the state D A N R on the composting toilet. If you have questions about that, he is here. The criteria reviewed, there's seven criteria that the application must meet. It does meet all of those things. There is existing access. They do utilize a, they bring water to the property cistern. There we go. And they have obtained several building permits for barns and a garage, which turned into just a carport.
Questions for Kelsey. I would like to talk to the applicant. I see one floating thing in here that I'd like to see pinned down a little bit and to help him.
Say your name.
My name is Jim Brunch.
Glad to meet you, Jim. My question was, it looks to me like your composting toilet is somewhat in a limbo or floating because it's in a vehicle, and it looks like the, the way I read it, the state of South Dakota comments on these things when they're used in structures and different things, but they seem to be ducking a little about the vehicle. Have you gotten satisfactory comments from them that you feel comfortable, we're all right in this situation?
I'm really hard to hear.
Yeah. You gotta talk a little louder.
I'm sure you've had it.
Can you just interpret?
He's just wondering, the state, their comments on it, they didn't have a comment because it's in a vehicle instead of in a structure. So they didn't really make a yea or nay either way.
What question?
Well, it's just, is it okay with our department, basically?
Yeah. Do you folks feel comfortable, you and you with that being an open issue? My concern is down the road, somebody always decides to pull the pin out after people have done things for a while. Somebody else takes a look at it in a different light, meaning well, perhaps, but is he comfortable with that?
I am comfortable with that.
They've been using it since 2019, I believe.
Okay.
And it's been working well.
Yeah. It appeared that way. It's just nobody seemed to want to put their name on the dotted line. He, you, you and he have done it, but nobody else as far as the approval.
Yep. And unfortunately, TJ is not here today, so our environmental planner, so he just made the comment that he wanted state to make comments.
Mm-hmm.
So here we are.
All right. Well, I'm comfortable continuing on. I'm just saying, I, if you're comfortable with remaining with that an open issue with the state, for now, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah. In other words, if they, if they come up with requirements, I'd have to comply with the new compliance requirements? I guess so. What would happen in a case like that if I just rented a JH on for the summer?
I'm not sure by leaving the door open that it was in a vehicle that you're not somewhat grandfathered. That's what I'm feeling, but you've been using it that way for some time, and I think you'd have a pretty good footing to stand on.
Yeah, it works well.
Okay. My question's answered. Thank you. Any other questions while we've got the applicant up here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, address a motion and Kelsey's recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of C O C U 25-0014.
Second.
It's been moved and approved to, approved per staff's recommendation, C O C U 25-0014 with 11 conditions. Comments or discussion from the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 12.
14.
14.
Oh, 14. Yeah. Sorry. Having trouble with numbers today.
Going backwards.
All right. Just pounding on the desk or something.
Morning, Commissioners.
Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. Agenda item number 14 is conditional use permit C O C U 25-0015 to allow bed and breakfast. The applicant owner is Brooks Johnson. Location is 24055 Noddy Pine Court, is on 4.5 acres and agricultural district, and there's no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission must consider in their review of the conditional use permit applications. Pennington County Planning and Zoning at 323 lists the criteria that must be met to allow a bed and breakfast, and those are listed on the board. Request was routed for interdepartmental review. There is no objections or concerns that were received. The applicant has asked to request a conditional use permit for bed and breakfast. The bed and breakfast will utilize the existing septic system and be attached to an existing garage. They have started a fire mitigation plan with the South Dakota Department of Public Safety Wildfire, Wildland Fire. The main structure of single-family residence is classified as owner-occupied by the Department of Equalization. The bed and breakfast is approximately 698 square feet. No objections have been received for this, so staff recommends approval of C O C U 25-0015 with conditions. And Brooks is here if you have any questions for him.
Questions for Christine. Go ahead.
Fire mitigation plan, and then it says Johnson cost-share treatment area. What, are they just thinning?
Yes.
That's it? Okay. All right. Yep. That's all I need. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioners want to speak to the applicant? Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Okay. Any desire to speak to the applicant? Okay. Chair, address a motion on the recommendation of staff.
I move we approve C O C U 25-0015 with 13 conditions.
Second.
Did you get 13 conditions, did you say?
Yes.
Yeah, 13.
13.
Okay. Second for that is done. Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, C O C U 25-0015, per staff's recommendation with 13 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 15.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we discuss 15 and 16 together, but vote on them separately.
Is there a second to that motion?
Okay.
Chair recognizes the motion to discuss together. It should be noted that that takes a two-thirds vote of the commission, and you must vote on the items as listed or published in the agenda on an individual basis. With that understanding, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seemed to be unanimous. Go ahead.
Okay. So agenda item number 15 is conditional use permit C O C U 25-0016. InRep rifles, Mark Limkey, he was not able to make it in today. The property owner is Jeff Stone. The location is 23794 Grub State Court, Unit C. It is in a planned unit development district. There is no flood hazard on the property. Staff recommends withdrawing this conditional use permit with applicant's concurrence as it is not required. The approval of minor planned unit development P U D 1905 will allow for a home occupation, and the applicant is currently living at Grub State Court, which is located within the P U D of 19-05.
Okay. Questions for Christine. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. So this will be paperwork only, basically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the guns are manufactured in Box Elder by Schilling?
Yes.
And then Schilling ships them?
Yes. He will sometimes ship replacement parts, just small parts, but otherwise they ship them from the.
The full rifles are shipped from them out there?
Correct.
Okay. No, that's the only question I have, sir.
The way I've read this, basically, he's running his administrative offices out of a P U D or P U C.
Correct.
Okay.
We had taken in the application for a conditional use permit, but that's not needed if the P U D amendment, minor amendment is approved, so.
Okay. Anyone here from the audience here to speak on this today? Chair, address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept conditional use permit C O C U 250016, or excuse me, withdraw conditional use permit C O C U 250016. That's withdraw, that one.
Correct.
With, yeah.
Second.
Moved and seconded to, per staff's recommendation, to withdraw the conditional use permit that's currently in place by C O C U 25-0016. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 16.
Agenda item number 16, planned unit development amendment P U D 19-06. The applicant is InRep rifles, Mark Limkey. The property owner is Jeff Stone. The location is 23794 Grub State Court, Unit C. It's in a P U D district with no flood hazard on the property. Requested use appears to be considered with a list of allowed uses in this P U D. Request was routed for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns. The applicant has requested a planned unit development amendment to allow a home occupation, a home-based firearms business. The applicant does have a state sales license. The Department of Justice, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives have been in contact with staff, making sure the land use and/or permits are correct for the FFL license holder. Staff has not received any complaints regarding this request, so staff recommends approval of minor planned unit development amendment P U D 1906 with conditions.
Questions for Christine. And this is the Rockerville P U D. Okay. Just so everybody has an idea, perhaps, that was sitting in the audience. And I assume then they're going to use, they must be in a location that they're using that address the year round.
Yes.
Okay.
He's renting that year round.
Oh. Any other questions for Christine? Hearing none, you might as well give the chair a motion in regards to this amendment.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of P U D 19-06.
Second.
Been moved to approve, per staff's recommendation, amendment to P U D 19-06 with 29 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 17.
Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. Item 17 is conditional use permit C O C U 25-0012. It's to allow a contractor's storage yard on the subject property. The applicant is 63 Industries LLC, Clyde Lipp, and the landowners, Mule Ear LLC. This is located at the corner of 225th and 151st Avenue. This has been continued several times as the Planning Commission wanted the determination of the, of the mining permit, see if the Board of Commissioners would approve or deny the mining permit. That mining permit was denied on August 5 with prejudice. Staff is recommending to deny conditional use permit C O C U 25-0012 without prejudice since that mining permit was denied. And the reason why we recommend without prejudice is contractor's storage yards are temporary in nature, less than what that mining operation would have been. So if there's another project in the area where equipment needed to be stored within the next year, it would give the applicant an option if there's another project that came up to have a contractor's storage yard on that property.
Questions for Cody? I just have one because I don't know how structurally it operates. When we do it without prejudice, Cody, they certainly have paid certain amount of fees to, to process this at this point in time. If we raise those fees, or how long before they go away? How long does without prejudice last?
It's for one year. So if it's, if you deny something with prejudice, they can't come back and apply for something similar on the same application within a year. If you deny it without prejudice, they can come back with the same application. They have to, all they have to do is pay the advertising fees and the mailings, have to re-notify the neighbors within 500 feet. So without prejudice, you're just, it's the same application, you just have to pay the, the advertising fees.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Cody? Hearing none, Chair, oh, excuse me. Anybody here in the audience want to speak on this? Chair, address a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny conditional use permit C O C U 25-0012 without prejudice as mining permit C O M P 25001 was denied at the August 5 Board of Commission meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to deny, per staff's recommendation, C O C U 25-012 without prejudice as mining permit Comp 25-0001 was denied August 5 Board meeting of, Board of Commissioners meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brittany, I'm gonna jump in front of you here. This is kind of an unusual situation, but I'm gonna, we have a number of speaker forums. We have people here to speak on this, and I'm not a great one for spinning people's wheels, so they have to come back when they have an opportunity to testify or put testimony before us in regards to a matter. I'm going to include their speaker requests into your first item, your 18 item. Uh, I'm gonna include their speaker, uh, requests into your first item, your eighteen item, even though they involve more with the rezoning and the other things. You got, and, and does the board have any question? I, I wanna make sure they get their opportunity and they can get in their car and get on down the road and they know they have their testimony on record.
Won't they still, on the next two, won't they still have the chance to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, not really. With our recommendation, they could. We can add it to that if you want. The recommendation is to continue, which I'm just trying to say to let them get down the road a little earlier, since they've taken the time to come here. They don't realize we're proposing to continue the two after this. And so I'd rather let you have your opportunity to speak and go home. Does anybody on the commission have a problem with that? I don't like them seeing, just sit here to spin their wheels to spin their wheels. Brittany, is that all right with you?
That's fine, 'cause this item, like with the plat, it'll still have to go through a final plat process, and it won't be able to be filed until the rezoning comprehensive plan or...
But their comments involve the property and, as well as the use of the property. I realize that. It's just an unusual thing, and I'm asking the board and your, your permission to go ahead and feel confident and those folks don't have to sit here longer.
That's fine, either way.
Thank you. You go ahead, Brittany. Thank you. Item number eighteen.
So, item number eighteen is preliminary plan COPPL 25-0008 for Shane Schreiner. It's to create lot AR and lot B of Lot Two of Iowa Plaza MS 636. Um, so basically what this preliminary plan is, is these lots are two lots already, but these lots are separated, like this lot and this lot are part of a portion and in this, in the middle. And so what the applicant is asking is to reconfigure the lot lines, so it makes a little more sense, and to create a little bit more buildable area for this property. There is a section line that goes through here. Uh, so there is some, um, it would make this lot without this reconfiguration somewhat difficult to put a structure on. So, basically, this preliminary plan is just to reconfigure the lot lines, so these two lots make sense. In order for this plat to be filed, it would have to be rezoned and a comprehensive plan amendment done, because if you look at these lots, this larger portion is already commercial. These lots have two separate designations. They have suburban residential and agriculture. Uh, so they would have to rezone this lot to something in order for the plat to be filed, because it would create, um, some challenges with the zoning. Um, it would have two different zoning districts on it. So, with that, this is just the preliminary plan to reconfigure the lot lines to create these two lots. Um, it's going two lots to two lots, so it's not increasing density. Um, so with that, staff is recommending approval of preliminary plan COPPL 25-0008.
With six conditions.
With six conditions.
Thank you.
Which one of the conditions is that it does have to have a rezone? So, just for clarification.
Questions for Brittany?
Yeah, I have one. Where would you build on that triangular shape where it...
You would have to build up in this north portion of it.
Just that's be the only place?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless the section line was relocated.
Yep, that's all I have.
Brittany, if you look under property history and proposed lots, I come up with that there's eight point nine six acres in the property history, but we're proposing on ten point three eight five acres.
Well, the surveyor is here and he can speak to that. A lot of times with these surveys, if they're old surveys and they used old, old technology, when they resur, survey them, those numbers can change, and they're more accurate.
Yes, they, they, it looked like his survey came up with the nine point zero one and a one point three one four. But I would, I, just for the record, 'cause I hate to get these things in the record wrong.
Correct. And like I said, that's somewhat typical, just because of the technology change. And this does about Forest Service, and Forest Service has done a lot of other surveys in the area recently, so some of those have changed as well with the Forest Service surveys.
Yeah, I'm all aware now that they take them out of the air, so to speak. And I don't mean that they're inaccurate because of that they're using their satellite designations, and the smaller properties tend to have lot lines move pretty significantly.
So you can see some changes in the pre and post, based on the, the newer technology of the surveys.
And did you say he was here, though?
He is.
Okay. We should probably, just for the record, have him respond to my question. I would think. Does the board feel more comfortable too, at least, when we've got quite a... Yes, sir. Please have, you have to state your name for the record, and then you can go from there. You already know the question.
Uh, yeah, my name is Wesley Seebeth, I recommend, or represent Long Branch. I am not the current surveyor. Um, that would be Jeff who's signing the plat here. Um, but yeah, I know that this is kind of an older area, um, and that, that would definitely, uh, go as to why the acreages would be different on that.
All right. I just, then my only comment would be is please, when you go back, make sure that that's the case and, because we do see these, but, you know, what do we got? One and a half acres, that's a lot. We've seen them tense, but...
Sure.
One and a half comes out a lot, but then again, that one lot is very small. It's a one-acre lot, so... I understand be, having been up there and live up there, that it moves. I have one of my neighbors that has a lot line now two hundred, two hundred feet away from where it was used to be.
Sure.
That's pretty exciting.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point in time on this? I'm going to go ahead. Did you understand what I was talking about, so you guys can get out of here? I'm gonna go down these speaker requests. It is on the same property. This is being dealt with separately. The next two items, I believe they're gonna tell me to deal with them together, but we are looking at continuing them, and I don't want to ask you to sit here and wait while we discuss that. So the first speaker is Rod Lindt? Lindstrom, yeah. I didn't see the S, sorry.
I'm Rod Lindstrom, Reno Gulch resident. I would like to voice my opposition to the rezoning request located at the bottom of Reno Gulch Road. I have concern with increased traffic on Reno Gulch due to any form of commercial enterprises happening at the beginning of the road. Whether it be a UTV rental hotel or any other form of commercial use, I believe it will draw further traffic up the already highly traveled, narrow-winding road. Holmeslong Reno Gulch are close to the road, and any additional traffic would only further degrade the peace and tranquility of the valley. I'm also concerned with additional traffic coming off Reno Gulch, attempting to enter Highway 16. This is already an often dangerous and difficult intersection to merge onto. Sixteen and increased traffic due to commercial enterprises will only exacerbate the issue, causing further troubles for those who, of us who actually live on the road. Our hope is you will take my concerns into account before approving any sort of commercial zoning in the area.
Thank you. Questions for Rod? Thank you, Rod. Rod Schaefer.
Rod Schaefer, another Reno Gulch resident. And I'm here to, really, we don't care about joining properties or whatever, but I'm here about commercialism. We're concerned about traffic. And, uh, it's a dangerous spot right there, pulling in and out of there, just the way it is with tourists we got. It's, uh, not a good spot. You know, the Black Hills is, our history is mining, ranching, and timber, and tourism. But it seems like tourism's taking over. Every year, there's more and more tourists. If you're one of the people that make money off of tourists, you're happy. The rest of us just do our job and put up with them. That's the way it's been for years. But here we have to ask, when are the hills filled to capacity? When is now? You don't, if you do not want to be where the tourists are, you stay home. But now the problem is with side-by-sides, they go where we go. There is no place safe you can get away from side-by-sides. They come to us. You can't even stay on your own property and get away from them. Hundreds a day go up Reno Gulch, China Gulch, Deerfield Road. Hundreds a day, day and night. It's out of control. The trails that used to be designated are all tore up. There used to be green grass and dirt. Now, there's no topsoil, only rocks. Mud holes that used to hold water for wildlife, they're all splash-dried by side-by-sides. They get in them water holes and tear them up. They're in, they park in our driveways dozens at a time while they fool with their GPS or lack thereof, and try to figure out where they're going next. Up, up Reno Gulch, the gravel is so tore up, you can't hardly get up the hills with a semi, because of the washboards and the cookies they spin in the gravel. First and first gear to climb up them hills. I guess what I'm saying is we're not really opposed to rezoning, joining your property. We're gonna cut to the chase. We're sick of side-by-sides. It is out of control. The Forest Service knows it's out of control. They opened up a can of worms, but they never knew it was gonna get like this, and neither did we. You know, it's, uh, the money-making proposition for tourists. But they're, uh, when is enough? Enough. I think it's enough, you know, like they say, they're, uh, they're gonna pave over paradise to make a parking lot, and that's happening around Hill City. You know? All of us people that lived in Reno Gulch, third generation for my family, would have never believed this. What I think we should do, everybody that has a business running side-by-sides, we should send them by their house day and night to drive circles around their house, see how they like it. I bet it wouldn't be the same after that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Rod? Thank you, Rod. Marcy Mitchell. Marcy, you gotta introduce yourself, just for the record. And you can pull that mic down so we can... Thank you.
You know, it helps us to think about the geographical definition of Gulch. And it's described as a narrow valley or ravine, often with a stream or creek bed at the bottom. And this is what we live with. We have used Reno Gulch Road for fifty-seven years. We've had property out there for fifty-seven years. And I think the points that have been made are very, very important. It is very difficult to travel that road safely and without really concentrating on it, without thinking about what might be coming around a corner where we can't see ahead. We have a very narrow, winding road. And since we have this influx of vacationers who ride the little ATV vehicles up and down that road, many times, long lines of them. It is difficult for us to get out of our driveway. It's difficult for us to get onto the highway, not only because of the tourists during the summer, but also we have a restaurant across the street, and there are people... When I worked at the Journal, I used that road twice a day, summer and winter, for many years. And I avoided being forced off the road a number of times. There was one time when I couldn't avoid it. So I'm very familiar with that. There's another aspect beyond changing our way of life, really, from this beautiful setting. And the, the quality of life that we have there is so precious. There is no question that if this area outlined turns commercial, we will suffer, as will all the people along that way, and inevitable loss in terms of our property value. So, it is difficult to say to someone, no, you can't go and use this space to make more money. But to think of the amount of money that would be lost over the years with a change in property value, that that kind of, uh, operation would bring. It is frightening. It is more than worrisome. And it is a very uncomfortable thing to think about, to have that kind of involvement right there, affecting all of us, affecting so many people, really changing our lives in a way that would be very negative. And when you get to be like a thousand years old, like I am, you know, what you hope is that the last time that you have is going to be peaceful and without such, and a really difficult change. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Marcy. Any questions for Marcy? Rick Schaefer.
Yeah, my name is Richard Schaefer, and I live on Reno Gulch Road. And I won't go through a lot. I agree with everybody else here. We're all here for the same thing. I'll just give you a couple of examples of what I go through. I retired, took over a family home, and thought, well, this is gonna be peaceful. Started out that way in the front yard, having coffee, but not anymore. You can't have a peaceful, quiet morning in your yard. And a couple of examples, I added, oh, seven or eight side-by-sides pull in the road beside me, and it's... I put up a sign, 'cause they didn't want them going up the hill, so I put up a sign. Well, instead of them backing up, they go through my yard, right through my yard, back up on the road, take off. Another example, across the road from me is Forest Service Road, and there was... And not all of them are bad, some of them are good. But they pull in there, they gun it, rocks hitting my pickup, sitting in my driveway, shattered, or didn't shatter a window, but it chipped the paint on my pickup. So I waited for them to come back out, and I hollered at them to slow down, and I give them the middle finger there. And they took off up the road, and I thought, well, I'll never see them again. Well, they come back at one o'clock in the morning, screaming up and past my, front of my house. I'm sure it's the same ones. But anyway, we, people live on Reno Gulch Road or are witsy-hinned with so much of this, so thank you for listening.
Questions for Ms. Schaefer? Thank you. And our last one is John Henderson.
Good morning. Thank you for your service. My name is John Henderson. I live at 24048 South Highway 385. I got the certified letter from the Schreiner family, because we actually have property adjacent to this said property on the opposite side of the highway. So I did get the certified letter. Everything everybody else said here is true. I'm, won't surprise those of you who know me, I'm gonna go down a little bit different path, and that's the legal path. My question is, I see that there's a section line in there. Mr. Schreiner told me years, a few years ago, when we were in a different section line dispute, as you, some of you recall, um, that that was closed. So I don't know where that section line comes into this, but I guess my, my, my larger interest here is, what about the, you know, and there, all the Reno Gulch residents are concerned about the traffic, and getting on and off Reno Gulch Road on at 16385 is never easy, almost year-round. My, my question is, what if, what has anyone done, any engineering, any, anything, any planning or whatever, for approaches? Are they gonna access this commercial property if it's granted off of Reno Gulch Road? Are they gonna... Are they gonna access it off of sixteen? Maybe Mr. Schreiner has an answer to that, I don't know. But it, pa, in the, not very long ago passed, there was a section line closed that landlocked us from some of our property. It went through this commission, and it went through the full county commission after years and lots of money fighting it. So if the section line, if the section line is still in place, is that gonna be utilized as an access? Do they plan to, and I know how they get in and out of there, everybody here does. So is that gonna be their access to this commercial property? And I guess the, or is it gonna be accessed off of sixteen three eighty-five? Which, uh, attorney, not attorney, engineer, Zucker from the DOT, said that they would no longer allow any more accesses to sixteen three eighty-five. So my, my larger question is, and I agree with everyone that's, the destruction of the Black Hills, they're destroying what people are trying to promote. Sometimes you don't see the forest through the trees, but you can't see it over a craft register either. So, you know, so the easement, or the, the accesses and the approaches would be, I, my larger question after everybody else already, already addressed the other issues. So is there a plan for, for an access, an approach, on or off of Reno Gulch Road, or on and off of sixteen three eighty-five?
Thank you, Jen. I'll try to answer. Right now, that certainly is gonna be a factor when, when a use is selected. The next two items they're on, since you're on eighteen, which involves the plat to combine the property, and then we go to a requested comprehensive plan and a zone. Those won't involve the, the approaches right now until the use is announced. And then the state and the county are gonna work on the approach. So that's gonna have another step, John, and, and so you're probably gonna get an opportunity to see what they're either offering or not offering.
Well, I'll be back.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to explain.
Okay, but I'm not clear on when, if we're on eighteen, nineteen, or twenty right now. I think the whole thing, the conversations all lumped together.
Most of it, correct. And that's why I allowed these conversations now, is because most of us people wanna talk about eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. But we, I didn't wanna hold you here and, and put you in a parking situation any longer than you had to. Because in your case, if it's about the access, no question about it, you're gonna be back. You're gonna want more testimony on, on what is selected.
Okay, can you explain to me then, are we on eighteen, nineteen, or twenty? Or are we just?
Yeah, we're on eighteen right now, which is the plat.
Okay. All right, so I will wait.
Okay. You don't have to, we, your record is, that's why I'm allowing this, it's on the record now in regards to this property. Your conversations.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank all of you for your service.
Anyone else wanna speak on this before we're done, and then we're gonna move on? Go ahead.
Rod Lindstrom, I just wanted to comment on a little bit of a lot.
You have to reintroduce yourself.
Rod Lindstrom, Reno Gulch resident. There's been a lot of talk about the UTVs, where the applicants for this rezoning are the Schreiners, and they are currently operating a UTV business in Hill City downtown. So that is why they're concerned about the UTVs being so close. They're running them right out of there. They're already says they come up Reno Gulch Road intentionally. So, there you go, thank you.
Thank you. All right, for you folks that have testified and don't care to testify in the future, it won't mean anything, but the continuation that's being proposed on the next two items, which is nineteen and twenty, is September eighth, through your calendar. And I appreciate, I appreciate the commission allowing me the flexibility. When we get these speaker forms, it usually denotes all of them. And I can't make a decision and say, you don't wanna talk about eighteen, or you don't wanna talk about nineteen. So it was easier to run them all through, and let's let them get down the road. And, and I thank you for coming in, but you do, if you cannot make the September eighth meeting, your testimony is on record. And we do consider that, and we're gonna talk about, because we get them sent by email as well. If you wanna rejuggle our cage, you can send another one by email and say, listen, I was there before, and I was unhappy then, and I haven't gotten any happier now. Okay? You bet, thank you for being here. All right, now, we are on item number eighteen, which is a preliminary. No, no, we're still on the preliminary plat, we haven't done anything with it.
Correct, we're still on eighteen.
Yes. So preliminary plat, at this point in time, the staff is recommending approval of that plat, and it is a property issue, as you might well know, and with six conditions. So we're back to discussing it. Go ahead, commission, anybody got a question for Brittany?
Chair, I do have a comment.
Sure.
Um, it is my understanding, and I've talked to the highway department, that the approaches will be off of Reno Gulch Road, and that they are going to require that those approaches be upgraded to commercial approaches if the commercial zoning is approved. Um, one other thing to note, too, is the comments. If you look at the red here, this is all highway service and commercial zoning that's existing.
Yes, would you put that?
So we're only speaking about rezoning the, this one, a little over one acre portion. So all of this pink and red is already commercial zoning in the area. So just for clarification.
So the gentleman that commented in regards to that, he had understood the state wasn't going to allow additional on sixteen three eighty-five is, it goes his way a little bit. They're gonna make him put them off of Reno Gulch at this point in time?
There's no indication that they were gonna request. This larger parcel right here already has a structure on it with an approach.
Okay. Off of, into Reno Gulch?
Off of Reno Gulch Road.
Okay. Very good, that's a good comment to throw in. Any other questions for Brittany?
And, Mr. Chair, um, the section line that the person talked about is the one that's shown on the plat, correct?
Correct.
It's been vacated?
Um, I will have to verify that. It's quite possible. There's very little buildable area on that lot with, if it wasn't vacated. Um, if it's not, my, my understanding is that they could possibly relocate it to Reno Gulch Road. Um, but I will have to verify that.
And then can I ask a question? Does Reno Gulch Road have a road district?
No, it's actually county highway.
And I suppose the county can't restrict the use of ATVs, UTVs on roads, correct?
It is my understanding if they're road-ready, um, they have their license plates and things like that, that that would be up to the sheriff's department if it's a public road.
It would be up to what?
The sheriff's department, because it is a public road.
Okay, thank you.
Some of those, Lori, they help you out from a guy that was on a road district, and we do have problems. And I was up in Hill City on the same thing. Once you designate by a road district anyway, it's a public road. So if you're unhappy with motorcycles being too loud, for instance, that doesn't mean they can't pass down your public road because you made a road district. Certainly their use and, and other aspects of it could be questioned, but not on the road. Um, just to point here, then, would the, if it's not vacated, then the thirty-three feet and the twenty-five feet do apply, huh?
Correct, the fifty-eight foot setback does apply.
You realize why I'm talking to this, setbacks in regards to a section line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then Chair, if I may, one other, um, item. Like I said, I had talked to the highway department, and they did make comments on that. And then there was some discussion about ATV use, um, sales and rentals. That does require a conditional use permit. So if that was an option, that they wanted to do that kind of business, there would be a CUP requirement.
Another round.
Correct, so there'd be further notice and another hearing in front of this board for that request.
That's what I was trying to get through to the folks without trying to preach or say that these things go down the road a little farther.
So I just wanted that clarification for the group that is here.
Oh, you did, super job, Brittany, I agree with you a hundred percent. You can see if that's the case for the use, it's gonna come up.
Correct, it would still have to come in front of this board if they do request ATV rentals or sales.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions for Brittany? And this is on the plat. Preliminary plan, excuse me, preliminary plan.
Brittany, that little triangle up there, they say it's not large enough to build on. Could they use that as a parking lot, though, for their trailers?
Um, it is large enough, they're just combining these. So if you actually, these two lots, like this lot and this portion right here, are actually considered one legal description or one tax ID. And then this portion in the middle is another one. So basically, they're just reconfiguring the lot lines and getting rid of, like, this lot line right here, just to make this one lot with that frontage on there. So when we're speaking, and this is the next item on that rezone, it's just for this one point three one four acre parcel. This lot B, this nine acres, is already commercial or highway service zoning.
Any other questions?
Can I ask one more question? And Brittany, you said those, the other ones surrounding it are all highway services. Um, do you know what kind of businesses there are?
Uh, this one has a CUP for like a warehouse building. This is, uh, like, they have like a logging operation, something. Um, and then this is the bus barn for the Hill City School.
What about the other side of the road?
Uh, the other side of the road, I don't recall off the top of my head. The neighbors probably do know.
But there are active businesses all around it?
Correct.
That's the Silver Dollar.
This one?
The restaurant.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
On the, on the, on the east side.
This one? Yeah. And Reno Gulch Storage. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brittany? Hearing none, Chair address a motion on item number eighteen.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept preliminary plan CO PPL twenty-five dash oh 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 eight, in six conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to accept per staff's recommendation, CO PPL twenty-five dash zero 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 eight, with six conditions. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Now we're on to item number nineteen, and I realize you have a request.
Yep, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we discuss nineteen and twenty together and vote on them separately.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
For discussion, chair is in agreement with that. You have to be reminded, it has to take a two-thirds vote, and you must vote on each item individually after discussion. Any other discussion on that from the audience? From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, appears to be a hundred percent. Go on, Brittany, with nineteen.
So item number nineteen is comprehensive plan amendment COCA twenty-five dash zero zero nine for Shane Schreiner. To amend the comprehensive plan to change a future land use from rural residential district, suburban residential district, and highway service district to commercial district. And staff is recommending to continue this item in order for the property owner, he, as part of the preliminary plan, they do need to get a subdivision regulation variance or improve Reno Gulch Road. So that request has to be submitted in front of the Board of Adjustment.
Questions for Brittany? Just for the record, and this is the same thing we run into with our speaker requests. We have a number of opposition letters that have arrived by email. And I wanted to point out for the public to know that listens to us, and whatever, we do receive those, we do read them. And they are part of, in my mind, and I don't know how you deal with them, they involve both eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, as we're discussing here. Just for the record. Hearing no other discussion from the audience. From the commission. All in favor of the staff recommendations? Aye. Both? Go ahead, move. You got a motion, don't we? Oh, we didn't?
No.
I got caught doing that again? I listened to myself too much on the, the opposing letters? All right, we need a motion, thank you.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Well, let's approve comprehensive plan amendment COCA twenty-five oh 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 nine with no conditions.
Okay.
Did you see it approved or continue?
We need to continue.
Staff recommends continuance until the eight.
Continue, both of those are, yeah, continue.
Per staff recommendation.
Yep, per staff recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded to continue COCA two five dash zero 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 nine to September eighth. Uh, planning commission meeting, per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. I'm sorry I got ahead of the vote here. Folks have done that twice already lately. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carried. We're on to eighteen, nineteen, and again, I'm just gonna refer to, we did receive the letters in regards. So if some of us folks were talking about, uh, number twenty, we have received them, we've taken them under advisement, and they are part of the official record. Brittany, go ahead.
So item number twenty is rezone CORZ twenty-five dash zero zero one zero for Shane Schreiner. To rezone from agriculture district, suburban residential district, and highway service district to a commercial district. And staff is recommending to continue CORZ twenty-five dash zero zero one zero to the September eighth, twenty twenty-five, planning commission meeting.
Questions for Brittany?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And the rezone being continued relates to the same issue related to nineteen?
Correct.
They have to do the subdivision reg amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Brittany? Hearing none, Chair address a motion.
I recommend to continue CORZ two five zero zero one zero to September eighth, twenty twenty-five, planning commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded to, uh, per staff's recommendations, continue COCA two five dash zero 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 nine to the September eighth meeting of the planning commission. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carried. Thank you. And you always, I numbered these a little there from Brittany, we'll get up there. Twenty-one, is it the first one? Yes. On to twenty-one.
So item number twenty-one is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero four for Pennington County to amend section two oh one, the establishment of districts of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And the reason for this amendment is to amend this section to include the new zoning districts consistent with the Pennington County comprehensive plan viewed at twenty forty. Uh, if this board does remember, we did some comprehensive plan changes. Um, they went into effect on July twenty-third. So with those changes, um, we need to update our zoning ordinance to reflect those changes. Um, so with the establishment of districts in this section, the biggest thing is that we are looking at suburban residential one and two and that neighborhood commercial, and then combining, um, the commercial and highway service district just into commercial. So this section two oh one just reflects that. It's just the narrative within our zoning ordinance. Um, so staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 four.
Questions for Brittany?
Mr. Chair, um, are these zoning districts, um, consistent with the surrounding counties? Or the city of Rapid City?
The nomenclature.
Yeah.
Um, so SRD one and two are very similar to, um, the city's LD one and two. They call it low density. Um, the commercial district, we did have highway service district and commercial. We just combined those because they had very similar use by rights. Uh, the only dissimilarity to them was that the highway service district would allow amusement structures, um, but with a lot of discussion with our fire administrator, uh, and in some issues that he had had with some of the amusement structures, um, we moved those into a conditional use under our commercial district instead. Um, and then with the removal of the highway service, we added that neighborhood commercial where they could have some low-impact commercial, um, in some areas.
So you feel like it's, it's close enough that it's not too confusing to people, you know, to the citizens? It's?
Well, everyone has kinda different, you know, some have park forests, which is similar to some of our, you know, open space. Um, but these are ones that are consistent with our uses that we've had for quite a while. These were recommendations that came from the original, um, view to twenty forty and twenty twenty, those recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
Brittany, and then I assume urban residential, the county itself is ex-incorporated areas, which have some urban, I'm sure. The county doesn't really have an urban anyway, does it? And I see you're axing it out, so.
Correct. So that nomenclature was kind of misleading, I believe, um, in the original comprehensive plan amendment. So we changed that to SRD one and two, and that's more consistent, um, with typical planning processes. There's very little that's dissimilar in those, except for the lot size is six thousand square feet versus sixty-five hundred, and the front yard setbacks are twenty feet in lieu of twenty-five feet. Um, and it does, urban residential does allow multifamily up to a fourplex, and that's it. So any apartments or anything like that would require CUP. So there was some, we learned through some of the requests to change to urban residential, um, that it created a sense of a different type of zoning that would allow high-rise type apartments and things like that, which is typical in a city or a municipality, but not in the county. So we just changed the nomenclature, but not necessarily the requirements.
Okay, and the only dissent I had on anything was the neighborhood commercial. I really think what you're telling is you're dealing with neighborhood commercial all the way through commercial. It really isn't just neighborhood commercial.
Right. So when, when we get to that section, so that section will be on in a later agenda item, you can see the uses that are allowed under that district and their very low-impact commercial. It will still allow commercial in more residential areas without having, if you look at the commercial districts, there's forty-four permitted uses, which can be overwhelming.
Pretty broad spectrum in the first place. Yeah. That's all I was getting at. It looks to me the title of it is just a little light.
Right.
It makes people think of just neighborhood commercial. And neighborhood commercial, to me, is a dry cleaning store, the little tiny store and that sort of thing. And yet, we're doing a little broader approach with those other forty items that are included in the original commercial, let's say.
Correct. It will allow for more low-impact, smaller commercial uses without the concern of some of the forty other ones.
I was just picking on your name selection.
Oh, that's all right.
I'm not sure it really fits. Anyone else on the first one? Staff recommends approval.
I'll move for, that we recommend approval for, um, ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 four. Per staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, ordinance amendment OA two-five dash zero 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 four. Discussion, we don't need any from the public, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So?
On to twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Item twenty-two is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 five, Pennington County to amend section two of, to the official zoning map of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And again, this section was amended to be consistent with the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan viewed to twenty forty, uh, with the changes. Uh, the biggest, um, comments to note in this is that because of the PUD district, um, the changes in bringing back the PU, PUD district, um, we did need to update, um, the last couple of sentences in this, um, about the legal nonconformity of PUDs and the PUD overlay districts.
Anybody got any questions on the zoning map? I just got one. I thought it was always written that, because that's why all the, the counties have their zoning map on the back of their department board if they've got a planning and zoning. I thought that, that a hard copy actually had to be up there for people to see on the wall.
Well, we do have Rapid Map, so that's what we use to show, and that's what we update on a regular basis.
So they're getting more flexible about the fact that all those colors and, you know what I mean? Every one that had a planning set.
Right. As long as it's available to the public, the issue with those maps is that that changes in Rapid Map on a regular basis every time you do a rezone or a comp plan amendment. So printing out a big plotter of those maps every single time there's a rezone is just not a reasonable, we can print them out if need be, if someone comes to the office and requests that. But that's what we use Rapid Map and our GIS for.
You notice, I almost chuckled. See, the way I read all that stuff on the hard copy, the old stuff that was written up, it sounded like you modified it every night before you went home, you know? It was the duty of the director to make sure that map wasn't out of place with the next person that saw it across the counter.
And that's what we do when they go effective in the GIS. And like I said, if someone come to the office and needed a printout, we can provide that. Uh, but our Rapid Map is the electronic version.
We're putting less com, uh, attention than on our hard copy and a little more on our electronic copy.
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Anyone else have a question? Hearing none. Chair to address a motion.
I make a motion that we accept zero A twenty-five dash zero zero five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to it. Uh, approve per staff's recommendation amendment OA two-five dash zero 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 five per staff's recommendation. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number twenty-three.
Item number twenty-three is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 six for Pennington County to amend section two oh five agriculture district of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, and this, uh, section was amended to include right-of-way requirements consistent with other zoning districts. Um, if you look at the proposed text, um, at two oh five C, uh, access, uh, this is common in other zoning districts. And for whatever reason, since the zoning ordinance existed, they never had this requirement. Um, and this is consistent as well with our subdivision regulations that require at least twenty-five feet of access. Uh, so that's why we did add that. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 six.
Question for Brittany on the language cleanup. Hearing none. Motion, please.
Mr. Chair, move approval of OA twenty-five dash zero 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 six per staff's recommendation.
Second.
And there's the second. Moving second to approve per staff's recommendation. Um, I'm gonna call it a language change to item two B of the ordinance on ordinance amendment OA two-five zero 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 six. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number twenty-four.
Item number twenty-four is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 seven for Pennington County to amend section two oh eight LDR Low Density Residential District of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh, it was to amend this section to change the minimum lot size, um, from point five acres to one acre to be consistent with the comprehensive plan changes. Um, so really, the only change in this is that the lot area, that the minimum lot size is now one acre instead of point five acres.
Very good.
So staff is recommending approval.
Question for Brittany. Hearing none. Chairs accept a motion to, uh, clarify the language in, uh, C, minimum lot requirements, lot area, uh, dropping point five. I don't think the five's in there, but anyway, changing it to one acre.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept zero A twenty-five dash zero 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 seven per planning, uh, recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, amendment OA two-five dash zero 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 seven in regards to moving from a point five to a one acre. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to number twenty-five.
Item twenty-five is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 eight for Pennington County to amend section two ten for urban residential district of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, and this was just to amend this section to change the nomenclature of the zoning description and to add additional square footage for corner lots with two frontages. Um, so the biggest change, like I said, was that we changed this from urban residential to suburban residential two. Uh, the other change was, um, on lots, um, that the minimum lot size was sixty-five, or six thousand square feet. Um, but there is an exception that we're requesting in this, that lots that have two frontages, i.e. corner lots, that they require a minimum lot size of sixty-five hundred square feet. Uh, we have run into concerns from builders and developers on lots that are platted on corner lots, that they don't have enough, um, buildable area when they have those two frontages. Um, so in order to mitigate that, uh, we're asking, and this is a kind of a common practice in, um, in other districts and in other areas, that they add additional square footage to accommodate that additional setback requirements. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 eight.
And as well as we're changing it to the names that you changed it to in the other one?
Correct. It goes to suburban residential two instead of urban residential.
Just wanted to make sure that, uh, whoever's listening to us understands we're seeing that as well. Any questions? Hearing none. Chairs in favor of a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 eight per staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, ordinance amendment OA two-five zero 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 eight per staff's recommendation. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number twenty-six.
So item twenty-six is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 nine for Pennington County to amend section two eleven Commercial District of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, the reason for this, uh, change is to amend this section to combine the highway service and commercial districts into one zoning district. Um, as you can see, the original commercial district had forty-eight. Um, and then we did amend, did, uh, kind of do some clarifications. We removed this amusement structure and uses. Um, these types of uses, we've put them into one instead of having all of these multiple ones. The other cha, major change, um, was adding the ability to have a dwelling unit to, as a caretaker residence, um, which is accessory to the permitted use. Um, right now, that would be a conditional use permit in a commercial district to have a caretaker's residence. Uh, so that was added. So those are the biggest changes. Um, and in addition, the tattoo piercing and permanent makeup salons. Um, previously, we had a licensing requirement for tattoos, piercing, and permanent makeup, and now it does, it requires a CUP. But at this time, it would be allowed in a commercial district. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero 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 nine.
Questions for Brittany?
We had a, um, up, up by High Seega, we had that Mexican restaurant, and we had the, the living quarters down below. Is that what this would be?
Correct.
Okay.
It would allow for caretakers. It wouldn't, in that situation, though, it would not, um, they would not, they would still be obligated to meet all of the ICC and the building permit requirements. So in that instance, because it was attached and part of a commercial dwelling was different. Um, so in some of these instances, think of like storage units. A lot of them will have a caretaker's residence. So this would allow them to have that. So there are some business, commercial businesses that, just by their nature, typically have a caretaker's type of residence. Um, so this would allow that without having a separate CUP for it. Um, one other thing, too, speaking of storage units, currently, storage units are a CUP in any district, and they would be allowed now as a use by right in commercial district under this amendment.
So that I didn't appear totally confused. The ones that are in red but are crossed out, that's because you couldn't cross them out in red and, or type them in in black and then cross them out in red?
No, so the ones that are crossed out in red originally were under highway service. If they're crossed out, either they're not allowed any longer and they require a CUP, or they were combined, the nomenclature. So like, uh, you, how you have barber beauty shops, barber schools, beauty shops, all of that. We just combined that into salons or schools because instead of having all of these extra things, it just made more sense to call them out for what they actually were. So we kind of combined some of that nomenclature. So it made more sense. So we weren't breaking out every single type of use.
I was hoping it, it wasn't second thoughts after.
No, no. And so the ones in the lighter pink are ones that were commercial. The ones in the red were highway service. Um, and then the one, the purple is the, kind of the change, changes.
I see what you mean. Number thirty-nine, even though it's not in red, is salons and beauty. And you cross out the other ones. Oh, okay.
Yep.
So it's not like a double whammy.
Yeah.
All right. And then you're going to fifty feet of access. Is that correct?
Yeah. Per.
Oh, you're going to fifty feet of access on a minimum lot requirements?
Yes.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Brittany.
And then also, Jason made a comment that UTV rentals would be allowed as a use by right in commercial under this change.
Okay.
So that would be the commercial recreation facility? No. Where would the rental, where's the rental at? What's it called?
Oh, thirty and thirty-one, and motor vehicle sales and rentals includes trailers and recreational vehicles. So it'd be number, this, number thirty.
So the commercial's gonna retain a twenty thousand square foot requirement then for lot size?
Correct. It just requires a fifty foot of access to public right-of-way.
Give or take, that's about a half acre, right?
Correct.
Okay, other questions?
So Mr. Schreiner's, uh, the ATV things, he wouldn't have to for a conditional use permit to sell those there?
Not under this requirement, once, if this.
Once it passes. Yep. Okay.
Any other questions? Chair to address a motion.
Accept ordinance amendment, uh, zero A twenty-five dash zero 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 nine per staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendations, ordinance amendment OA two-five zero 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 nine. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero zero one zero for Pennington County to amend section two twelve Highway Service District of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, and this amendment is to create the neighborhood commercial zoning district in lieu of the highway service, uh, since the highway service was combined with commercial. So this is a new zoning district. Um, it is depicted in our comprehensive plan that recently went into effect in July, at the end of July. Um, and if you look, the allowed, the permitted uses are, are much smaller impact type of uses. Um, so this neighborhood commercial zoning district would allow some commercial uses of lower impact. Because as you could see in some of those commercial districts, some of those could be significant. So this would allow commercial in some areas. Um, and it would allow options for people that want to have some of these lower impact without having to go to that commercial zoning district. So with that, staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero zero one zero.
Questions for Brittany?
Would you use a conditional use permit? And two thousand square feet for a neighborhood commercial is not very big. So say somebody has twenty-three hundred square feet. Is that just?
It would require a variance. Anything, a variance. So anything that has to do with metrics, as far as changes like that, would be a variance. Uses, any changes to the allowed uses would be a conditional use.
Okay.
Additional questions for Brittany? Hearing none. Chair to address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a, um... Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve ordinance amendment OA two-five oh-oh-one-oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve ordinance amendment OA two-five zero zero one-zero. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. On to item number twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero zero one-zero for Pennington County to amend section two-sixteen planned unit development of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And this was updated to reflect our change in planned unit developments in the comprehensive plan. Previously, in twenty-twenty, they took away the planned unit development zoning. Then updates that went into effect at the end of July brings back the planned unit development zoning. However, with the changes in this, there's, there's some significant changes. Some of the biggest ones, originally, the planned unit development was never intended to basically be a way to go around normal zoning districts. So this is actually to address some of our mixed-use developments and mixed-use structures. We're seeing a lot more structures that will have maybe businesses on the bottom, residential on the top. Right now, in our zoning ordinance, we don't have a way to address that kind of use. The planned unit development would be one way to address that. Like I said, this isn't intended for residential subdivisions, it's intended to utilize more mixed-use type of things. One other thing, just the application process is a little different. There's three steps in this process now, which would be a concept plan, which this commission would not see. This is something that is reviewed and looked at by staff, and any kind of comments would go back to them, and then they would apply for their PUD application in a rezone and comprehensive plan. Because the PUD is separate, the PUD is separate from the rezone and comprehensive plan. So the rezone and comprehensive plan would zone it to the PUD. What the PUD application actually does is, just as you saw in all the previous requests, when you look at neighborhood commercial or any of that, it sets out the permitted uses, it sets out the setbacks, it sets out the frontage requirements, and that's what that PUD application would do. So it basically sets the criteria for that zoning district. So when you look at PUDs, we consider them kind of a negotiated zoning district, so it doesn't fit in any of the other type of zoning districts, so they set all of those criteria and those parameters. So they'll set the uses that are permitted, they'll set the setbacks that are allowed and things like that. So that's why it's a three-step process, so that concept plan they'll bring to staff, staff can go through it, make their comments, send it back. And then the PUD and the rezone and comprehensive plan will be like a two-step process, so the planning commission and the board of commissioners will see those at the same time. So they'll see the rezone and comprehensive plan, those get approved, then they'll see the PUD to apply the criteria to that PUD's district. So that's kind of the steps that will go in to play with that. And then we are removing the PUD overlay and moving that into a conditional use permit. So you'll see at the end, it'll go into the multi-use permits. So the overlay district, the PUD overlay district, any of those will be grandfathered in, like I said, in that two-oh-two, in that other amendment that was approved recently. So that's kind of a general overview of the process, the new process. So staff is recommending approval of this ordinance amendment. So I entertain any questions. I know this section is a lot, so.
Go ahead, Mike.
Got a question. Okay, so you're going to start off with the PUD concept review plan?
Mm-hmm.
And if you guys okay that, then you let them fill out a PUD approval, and they come to us?
Correct, so it's kind of like what we do with our layout plan process. So the layout plan, they submit to staff, staff reviews it, it gets an interdepartmental review, we send all those comments back to the applicant and all the conditions, and then they have to look at that, and then they apply for their preliminary plan, so they kind of know what their requirements are going to be. So that's what that concept plan is, so they can look at, so when they submit their PUD application, they can address all of those concerns and comments of staff upfront. Not to say that more won't get vetted during the hearing process, but that is just, and it's a smaller, and you'll see in later, an amendment request, it's a smaller fee, so it at least allows the applicant to get an idea of what the requirements are going to be moving forward for their application in their rezone process.
So then, once that is approved, then you go to the rezone comp, that's a separate one?
Right, so there's two separate processes with the PUD. They have to rezone and change the comprehensive plan to a PUD zoning district, and then they have to apply standards to that zoning district. So once you zone it, so you zone it to a PUD, a PUD doesn't have general requirements like a suburban residential or a commercial district, so that PUD application is that application of those standards. So you'd have to rezone it and change the comprehensive plan first, and then you apply the standards to that zoning district as the PUD application. The concept plan is just like, hey, this is what we plan on doing, this is what we, we want to have mixed-use development, we want to have commercial on a frontage, we want to have multifamily, we want to have residential. This is intended for a lot bigger type developments, not like these one lot, two lot type of developments that we've seen in the past. We do have a lot of requests and some proposals coming forward that don't fit into any of our zoning districts where a PUD district would be more appropriate. So that's basically what it is for. It's for like a larger scale mixed-use development.
So if you had a housing development behind and then out on the road, like a little strip mall, and it's all together, would something like this be that, or would we be end up?
Yes, and it's not intended to be, so for residential development, if it's just all going to be suburban residential, that's not what it's appropriate for, it's appropriate to like mix in different types of housing types, without having to have CUPs here, CUPs there on every single lot. And it also gives the developer a lot of flexibility on where that type of development is going to occur. So during the plating process, they don't have to depict exactly where multifamily is going to be, because during the development process, it's very fluid, they don't know if the market's going to dictate more multifamily, more single family. So this would give them that opportunity to have that type of development within the zoning district, but not specifically pick exact lots that that's going to happen. So that's the intent of these types of districts.
And there's no more major and minor adjustments?
No, it's just an amendment.
Okay, that's all I got, sir.
Additional questions? You and I have talked about this before, I still think, because in my mind, I would see it more stringent requirements, but I still like PUD separated from a neighborhood or residential idea versus a commercial where somebody wanted to develop a commercial PUD, an industrial park that had good businesses and whatnot, and we could put separate requirements on that, that in regard to just commercial, where there's no housing going in with it. And I just see a need for that if we're going to develop good jobs and things like that in the future, so that those folks don't run into your process that includes all the other items, sundry items, and start defining or slip things by us or whatever, that's the only reason.
So a PUD could be used for mixed commercial and industrial as well. So it could be either or, so it could be mixed commercial-industrial, it could be commercial and residential, it could be mixed residential uses.
Now, I wanted to separate, I was going to make it tougher on the, the commercial and industrial side than I would on the residential side, but.
But that would come in the PUD application and the requirements, but they could have a mixed-use commercial-industrial type of area under a PUD as well.
As I thought we'd fall in that trap, are those things that we approved and quickly went through, I'm thinking that utility streets, those sort of things, may have one requirement for housing because you're not driving heavy trucks on it, versus I'm going to tell you that we're going to have a different requirement for the streets in a commercial-only.
You can still do that under a PUD.
Oh, I know.
Based on the types of uses.
But we have to argue it out with them as they submit their plan, right?
Correct, that's going to be a nego, that's why they consider it a negotiated zoning district.
But don't you think businesses reject that? They like to know upfront what they're planning and who they're going to select, and if they have a categories of business things that they've got to meet, and I've known businesses, once they pick that area, they'll fight every change of the law thereafter, but they will go along with what they picked and selected for that business to go into, and unless we favor that and look that way, so they know what we're walking into rather than totally negotiate, I think that's not good for us economically.
Well, it would be based on the types of uses, so the infrastructure for the uses that they're proposing would still have to be in place. The PUD wouldn't allow them to forego the infrastructure requirements.
There's just so many other little things for individual businesses, you know, I just think we need to announce that out there and say, here's, if you want to do an industrial area, this is what it takes. If you want to do a residential and neighborhood area, this is what it takes, and, and give them that upfront, because they're sitting back in New York or California, and they don't realize, they're just reading what the, the facts tell them.
Well, they would still have to, as part of that concept plan, submit their infrastructure plan, and staff would not recommend anything that those uses don't other, otherwise require under a commercial district. It's not a way to get out of requirements, it's just a way to combine requirements. Does that make sense?
Yeah, other than my requirements, I'd try to have that thing so rigged so we had nothing but great, wonderful businesses to live with.
Well, that's why it comes in front of you guys, so you guys can catch that.
I know, less negotiation, more upfront and say, hey, this is what we want, but that's the way, that's me. And, and you and I talk about that all the time, so we don't need to on this, but I do, this is a better way to go than what we had before.
We're hoping that this way will keep from doing those isolated PUDs in a way to circumvent the real underlying zoning districts that they need to apply for.
Those tighter requirements I was telling you about.
Lot zoning.
Anybody else got on this, this ordinance in regards to the commercial, or the PUD planned unit development district? Hearing none, the chair to address a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve OA twenty-five dash zero zero one-one.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation ordinance amendment OA two-five zero zero one-one, and I assume you read all the change in, in the verbiage and whatnot. Wasn't a lot, but it certainly called a lot of the things that, that were allowing that other use before, a bastardized use, for lack of a better term. Okay. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. On to item number twenty-nine.
Item number twenty-nine is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero zero one-two for Pennington County to amend section five-ten conditional use permits of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And again, this is to update the section to reflect changes to our comprehensive plan. The biggest change in this is that instead of having PUD overlays under PUDs, it's actually moving to a multi-use conditional use permit. So they're still able to do it, it's just under a different section, because we're already following the five-ten requirements under the PUD overlays, it's just now going to officially be under section five-ten as a multi-use permit. The biggest things that fall under those PUD overlays are the recreational resorts and specialty resorts. You see, this board sees those a lot under the PUD overlays, and it'll actually be a multi-use permit instead of a PUD overlay.
I think this makes sense, it makes sense to me. The only thing, three or more of these items, then you go to a multi-CUP.
Correct.
So if you only have two, it just stays a single CUP?
It's two CUPs.
Okay, all right, yep.
Any other questions? Only question I have is my usual one about LLCs, and your comment in there, in your new ordinance says, "Single ownership, the property must be under single ownership and unified control," which means we have an idea of who's really signing. And of course, LLCs, in my mind, unless we do a little bit more research and pin down beyond what the state of South Dakota goes, we're still, somewhere down the road, somebody's going to take us task on one of those, and we're going to have real fun defending ourselves against people we don't know. Even though we said it should be, because we don't know who that single signature is really in a LLC. We know it as a managing partner, or we know it as a manager, but we don't really know who the LLC is. So we don't know whether it's single ownership, one person got everybody doing it front. LLCs still bother me in a lot of these situations, so that's my only comment. Any other discussion on this? It is a great improvement. Thank you. Hearing none, chair to address a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept ordinance amendment number OA twenty-five dash oh-oh-one-two.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation ordinance amendment OA two-five zero zero one-two. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Item number thirty.
Item number thirty is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero zero one-three for Pennington County to amend section five-eleven be a fee, so the Pennington County zoning ordinance, and this is just to add the fee for multi-use permits. Currently, it would just fall under the conditional use permit, is five hundred dollars, a multi-use permit would be seven fifty. Currently, under the PUD overlay, it's actually nine hundred and thirty dollars, so it's actually a, a cost reduction. But, so staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash zero zero one-three.
Question for Brittany? Is the seven fifty reflective of the additional staff time you think you put in these things?
Yes, I think it's appropriate for what staff does on most of these.
Okay, on the multiples, is what I'm asking, yeah. Any other questions? Hearing none, the chair to address a motion to approve.
I move. Go ahead, sorry.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation ordinance amendment OA two-five zero zero one-three.
Who seconded that?
I just, I interrupted you, so I didn't finish it. I, I made the motion, I thought, but.
Yeah, I thought I heard.
Yeah, sorry, I interrupted.
Okay. Hearing second. Maybe I jumped too fast there, sorry. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. On to item number thirty-one.
So item thirty-one is ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash fourteen for Pennington County to amend section five-eleven H for fees, and this is just to break out the fees for the PUD under the new PUD requirements. So the amendment, the concept plan, the new PUD, those are the things that have changed as part of that process, because you also have to consider that they have to do a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone on top of these fees for the concept plan and the new PUD. So there's basically four sets of fees on there, so that's why those fees are consistent.
I didn't understand this one at all.
No, so the concept plan for the PUD would be a two hundred and fifty dollar fee to submit that with that administrative review, and then the new PUD application would be five hundred dollars, which is consistent with what a rezone, comprehensive plan, and conditional use permit are. So this is, those two essentially would be seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And we don't have a major or minor amendment anymore?
Just one amendment.
Okay, but we kept our Trailwood Village thing?
Yep, that was an action that was done a long time ago, so that stays on.
Mr. Chair, can I ask what Trailwood Village is?
That's the subdivision that's in Rapid Valley off of Covington.
Oh, okay.
It's west of Coving, west of Covington, south of Twilight. It's allow, larger mixed-use development that has that turtle pond. It's basically housing, but it was done quite a long time ago.
Okay.
Additional questions? Go ahead, Mike.
I have a question. I'm foggy here at this point. Concept plan, two hundred and fifty dollars, then the PUD is five hundred, and then we have another charge to rezone, or this is part of? have another charge to rezon, or this is part of?
No, the rezon and comprehensive plan amendment is separate, because that's a separate action. So that's establishing the zoning district. The PUD is actually establishing the criteria for the zoning district.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Chair to address a motion.
Chair, I would make a motion to, um, approve OA twenty-five zero zero one four per staff recommendations.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, ordinance amendment OA two-five zero zero one four. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And let's see what the numbers, we got so many numbers here today. Items from the public, the public left this. Items from the staff, building permit report.
We still have the county board report.
Oh, county board, did I put my page too quick?
Yes.
Oh, I sure did, yes. There's actually some comments on there too, sorry.
Yes, so the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the July fourteenth and July twenty-eighth meetings, uh, with the exception of OA twenty-five dash zero two to add section three thirty-two data processing centers, and OA twenty-five dash zero, zero three to amend section five-eleven fees. They were continued to the September sixteenth board meeting. Um, staff is gonna meet with some stakeholders on that, they have some comments. Um, so that'll give us time to do that before it goes in front of the board again. And then mining permit twenty-five dash zero 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 one for sixty-three Industries LLC, Clyde Lip, it was denied with prejudice.
By stakeholders, you mean people that are actually looking at processing centers, or people have land that they were thinking of?
Both.
Okay, thank you. Now we can go on to items from, oh, the executive session, that's, that's been kind of a slam dunk thing. If we need it, we use it, we don't, and today, we don't need it. I don't think we need any legal advice. Item number thirty-four is vacant, thirty-five.
Uh, just the building permit report. Uh, we're just on par with what we were for twenty twenty-four, we're almost identical. Um, we are, we are seeing an uptick, obviously, in the single-family homes because of the Apple Valley subdivision and the number of building permits, um, for that subdivision in Murphy Ranch. So there are two subdivisions in the valley.
Question is for Brittany about the building report. If you check the front, there, basically, the number of permits has gotten back in order a little bit lighter on the money. Other than that, it's very similar. All right. Items from the membership. Hearing none, we can address an emotion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. See you later in the month.